Do you call the meeting in front of order, please? Respect to the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you would note the role, please. Commissioner Curtis is absent. Mr. D., here. Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Mr. DeVal.
Here.
Commissioner Helmut.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Staley.
Here.
Is Jack excused?
He's not going to be here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jack Curtis.
Support. We have a motion to support those in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of agenda.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve agenda submitted.
Support.
We have a motion to support those in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, you have the minutes from our June 21 meeting before you.
Mr. Chairman, before we make a motion to approve, I'd like to bring a few items to your attention.
Okay.
Item eight, I think that the second paragraph is somewhat awkward. I don't know, I don't remember Mr. Moser's comments as being that disjointed, but if there was something we could do to clean that up to make it a little bit more understandable, I'd appreciate that. I don't have any suggestions for you. On the second page also under paragraph eight, I would like clarification on the sentence that follows your reading into the record, which is in third paragraph. I don't remember, that's what you said, and I'd like you to clarify that if you could for me.
That was, which item was that?
This is still item number eight.
Item number eight.
Was that Mr. Hampton's letter?
John read into the record.
Okay.
And not opposed to retail, but in opposition apartments or condos. I wasn't sure if you were making personal comments or...
No, what that was, was the letter, I believe that was...
From Jean Hampton.
Yeah, was given to me.
If we can have that clarified in the record so that these are not misunderstood as your comments.
Okay.
I'd appreciate that.
That's a good point.
Under item 10, further down on the page, in that big paragraph under new business, it says Jean Davidson, that's actually Jean J.E.A.N. Last name is Davidson, E.A.D.I.S.O.N.
Okay.
And other than that, I think everybody's doing a great job of putting these together. I know it's a very difficult job. So I'd make a motion we approve the minutes with those amendments.
Support. Actually, I'd like to suggest we set them aside only because of the paragraph on the front.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, then, I'll amend my motion and have them be set aside until they be submitted on our next meeting.
Yeah, if you could, listen to the record or listen to the recording, I guess, for Mr. Douglas's first comment and then also to where I read that into the record, perhaps it should indicate that it was a letter and who that letter came from and the address of the property that was represented by that letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty, we will do that. Yes, we have.
His last name is spelled with a D.
It is, yeah.
It is with a D.
Yeah, it is with a D.
Okay, I thought it was just a Davisson.
Alright. First name, though, is J.E.A.N.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that clarification.
I think it was Jean Hampton, so I'm like, there's no D in Hampton. I know.
But Jean is J.E.A.N. J.E.A.N. But it's J.J.E.A.N. Davidson.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Okay, under correspondence, we have the...
We didn't take a vote.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
We didn't take a vote.
Well, we will vote, is your motion to set aside till the next meeting?
That would be correct.
Bonnie, did you amend your support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, and those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence, the code enforcement activity report?
I have a question.
Yes.
The three and five South Washington, they're connecting that to seven or to one?
Between three and five, they're connecting with three and five.
There was a void there?
No, they're putting a doorway in.
Oh, I thought you meant like there was a gap between the buildings.
No.
Okay. Did there used to be a door there?
No.
Is that the one?
It was so she, Boulevard Boutique can go next door to the teen, well now it's a...
But historically, is that where Gross was or was that have been one down?
It was down, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I would second that.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay. Under old business, medical marijuana update, Mr. Denaskis had addressed the board, I guess probably six months ago perhaps it was, with an update. I think it was probably right around that window of time.
Yeah, when you folks, when a person's brought through this council, about six months ago, yeah.
Right. So, if possibly you could maybe just do a little brief review of what you presented to us last time and then with your update for the benefit of the new members here.
Certainly, certainly. I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to load and I'm not sure if we'll be able to put it on the screen, but I'll just, you know, obviously verbally go through it for you. And what I'll do today is give you just a real quick snapshot, just what the 2008 Public Act actually established, and then quickly get into what a number of the other municipalities are currently doing under the act, and then give you an update on what's going on at the state level and so forth. So, shouldn't take too long, and then we'll see if we can get it up here, just one second. If not, I'll just kind of verbally go through it. Okay, alright. So what we'll do is first I'll start off with, just so we have the very basics, so obviously back in 2008, November 4th, the Michigan voters approved to allow for medical marijuana through the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. And essentially, the very kind of basics of what that act enabled was essentially allowing for the caregiver-patient relationship. And those patients were allowed to or are allowed to cultivate up to 12 plants themselves. It also allows for primary caregivers, where a primary caregiver can cultivate 12 plants for themselves if they so choose, in addition to provide caregiver services for up to five qualifying patients. And so that's how you get to the magical number of 72 that you hear is kind of the maximum amount that currently a caregiver can do. So five patients at 12 and their personal 12 gets you to the 72 number. Obviously, it establishes the initial kind of criteria for what the qualifying conditions are. Those have since over the years been added on to by the department, but it's a whole host of litany of different conditions, be it AIDS, HIV, glaucoma, cancer, chronic pain, PTSD, there's quite a litany of different qualifying conditions that have been added over the years since 2008. It also set up for the Department of Licenseur, LORA, the acronym, to actually administer, as you might know, the actual caregiver and patient registry cards and so forth. So they actually are the ones that administer the current caregiver-patient program with regards to the various cards that the patients and caregivers have. It also sets forth the maximum amount that a patient can have on their person at one time at two and a half ounces of smokable marijuana. And so that's kind of in a real basic level of what the 2008 Act set up. And unfortunately, the 2008 Act had a lot of deficiencies. Not that the original act wasn't very well written, but normally this type of policies, you might know, is normally trailed by legislation that kind of fills in the rest of the regulatory structure and gives a little more meat, if you will, to the overall subject matter. That hasn't happened to date here in the state of Michigan. So we have a number of shortcomings that have appeared, you know, because of the '08 Act that municipalities are struggling with, obviously, in particular with regards to commercial facilities, how you regulate and treat those sort of applicants or folks looking to do business in the municipality, how you're supposed to zone them, if you're allowing, you know, dispensaries, does the actual act allow for that, as well as how you're supposed to monitor and regulate it. No other further legislation has been passed, so we're just up to the small amount of language that was provided in the 2008 Act along with some court decisions that have transpired over the number of years. So what a number of municipalities have done, just to kind of give you some idea of what some other municipalities around the state have been doing, it's kind of four different buckets, if you will, or options that different municipalities have done to date, and then we'll also talk about what's coming on the forefront in the future. So some folks have passed a moratorium to essentially say that, you know, publicly acknowledging that they're not allowing the commercial side or any operations in medical marijuana in commercial facilities. Some simply just address on a case-to-case basis if they're looking to come into more of a commercial setting and/or how you're treating it in your residential settings. Some are going through and just utilizing their current building and zoning applications and just putting in the like use that they could be in for like a cultivation and citing them that way. And then others are coming up with their own ordinances for zoning and applications to allow for the various facilities, both in the home setting and outside the home setting. With the moratorium, obviously you have a little bit of issues because then you still have the area in the rights within the Constitution, of course, with regards to the caregiver and patient's rights of the cultivation. Given that the 2008 Act is part of our Constitution, it was gone through a voter referendum, that is constitutional right that folks can, you know, cultivate a patient, their 12 plants, and a caregiver up to their 72. There is things that we've done in other municipalities that we can share with you about what you can do to properly regulate within a sense for home cultivation as well as allowing these cultivators and caregivers in the industrial type settings. When you deal with it on a case-to-case basis, obviously that can kind of convolute things with regards to, oh, you allowed, you know, applicant A to go in this industrial center, but you don't have an ordinance, applicant B, why can't I go into this industrial center? So a lot of these municipalities that have gone through and done it kind of on a case-to-case basis, that kind of opens up to litigation as well as, you know, kind of muckies the waters in this already gray area. For the folks that just go through and use some of the various applications that are currently there, you still have that same kind of issue. If you don't have a defined kind of ordinance or box where you're putting these, then it's really difficult to enforce as well as properly cite the various locations if you don't have an ordinance. And then you have a number of municipalities throughout the state that have developed a whole host of various different regulations, ordinances pertaining to allowing for caregiver patients to operate more in the commercial industrial spaces in municipalities. Kind of the surrounding area, you have Ferndale, Warren, Southfield, Commerce, Inster, Flint, Burton, Lansing have all developed ordinances to allow in some form or fashion from cultivators or caregivers going in your industrial settings to some form of dispensaries or provisioning center, call it what you will, but more the retail operation. And I can share with you as much as a little detail on some of those other municipalities that we've worked in, how they put it together and the like. That kind of just gives you an idea of what some other municipalities are doing, kind of the four options, be it a moratorium, passing an ordinance, just using your current rules and regs to regulate these sort of uses. So we have all these various shortcomings that we kind of outlined in the current 2008 Act, so what's being done to address these shortcomings. What I presented before was a little bit of an update on the package of bills that is working its way through the process right now to set up the commercial side, if you will, of the medical marijuana industry here in the state of Michigan. So real briefly, the three package of bills starts out with House Bill 4209 sponsored by Representative Colton, and that bill is called the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. So at a kind of 5,000-foot overview, essentially what this act would do is set up for five various licenses. And that starts with the growers or cultivators, where now you have the caregivers cultivating your patients and some instances cultivating. This would then set it up for a licensed individual entity to cultivate plant counts for licenses of either a 500-plant count, 1,000, or 1,500 plants. Those are the three licenses that they could get from the state of Michigan. The second license, or class of licenses, would be processing. And so that is for further processing the marijuana product into infused products, edibles, topicals, non-smokable forms of medical marijuana. Then there's provisioning centers, as they're titled in the act, or dispensaries, and so that is more of your retail, you know, pharmaceutical storefront for the transactions. There's also a testing or safety compliance license, and so that is sort of the folks that do the laboratory testing to make sure what the potency is, checking for mold, mice, and that sort of thing that you would have in the more of the agricultural type medicine that they're all checking for. And lastly, you have a secure transport. Now, the secure transport is set up very similar to how they transport pharmaceuticals currently to Patterson, CVS, and so forth. So essentially, it's two-man crews at minimum, in unmarked secure vans that bring the product to and from the various licensees, only from the licensees can it be moved with a secure transport. So you can't have an Uber driver or an employee or some sort of just traditional courier to move the product and/or currency. So these secure transports actually move the product and currency between the provisioning centers, the testing facilities, the point of cultivation, and so forth. So that's all done through the secure transport that's licensed. All five of these are obviously licensed through a board set up by LORA. The governor would actually be the one that appoints the members as it's traditional and essentially all of our pretty much licensing board. There's going to be five members, he appoints three, and then the other two from three nominees from our House, Speaker of the House would submit three names, he picks one of those, and same in the Senate, our Senate Majority Leader would nominate, you know, three individuals, and then the governor picks one of those to get you the total of five. Of course, they're going to kind of mimic this off of our gambling, our liquor control, and some of our other regulated industries with regards to how the licensing board is going to be set up, as well as also there's going to be an advisory panel. And so the advisory panel, again, like we have in other industries, that's going to be a host of different industry experts from the Michigan State Police, Health and Human Services Director, LORA, the Attorney General, the Agriculture Department, as well as then a patient, a grower, a provisioning center owner, a township, someone from a township, someone from a village, someone from the counties, someone from local police, the county sheriffs, and a physician. So one from each of those classifications can sit on this advisory board that is also appointed by the governor to kind of help set the rules and regulations. Because as you see as I go through these next couple points of what this package of bills is going to set up, there's still a lot of meat and potatoes, if you will, with regards to specific standards, things that will also be set up, and that'll be done through the licensing board and the advisory board in conjunction. There's also a local option. So first and foremost, if an individual wants to set up a facility within a municipality, there has to be a local ordinance in place that allows for that facility. So before someone could go to the state and actually apply to be a provisioning center or dispensary, a testing, any of the five licenses I mentioned, there has to be a local ordinance that allows for these sort of facilities before they can go apply to the state. So with the local option, obviously, there's a little bit of incentive as well, and so the way it's written, you can charge, if you so choose, up to $5,000 is an annual licensing fee for this sort of facility to defray some of your administrative cost, enforcement cost. And that's in addition to your current, you know, necessary permits, of course, for any plumbing, signs, certificate of occupancy. So that's just one other way they built in there to say, if there's extra costs deferred, you can charge up to $5,000 a year for that sort of licensing and to defray those costs. Also, a 3% excess tax that's collected on the medicine at the provisioning centers. So at the point of sale, provisioning centers, there's 3% excess tax, that's collected, and then if you have a local opt-in to opt in to allow these facilities in the municipality, then you get, the locals get 30% of that revenue sharing proratedly. And then 40% goes to the counties, five to the sheriffs, and 25% goes to our general fund. Two other bills, not as lengthy as these other ones, you have House Bill 4210, which is sponsored by Representative Lisa Lyons Posthumus, and that officially would allow for infused or edible products. The courts have essentially ruled that they didn't specify in 2008 that you could have infused or edible products. So this piece of policy would actually set up in law to allow for the infused, different products, edibles, and so forth. Also, very important, it also defines what usable marijuana equivalent is. That kind of ties back to the two and a half ounces that a patient's allowed to have on them. So they've come up with calculations saying, okay, if you have it in a liquid form, how much can I have? For enforcement reasons, selling reasons, of course, kind of have to define that. Same with edibles, you know, how many, you know, pieces of, you know, various edibles is it, or the topical pill, the topicals or the pills. So that's very important, and with that, you need a two-thirds majority because that would actually amend our Constitution to allow for the infused products. And then lastly, on the three package of bills, you have House Bill 4827, which is a seed to sale tracking bill essentially. Now we have 30-plus states that have medical marijuana in some form or fashion, the vast majority of them are moving to a seed to sale tracking system if they have any sort of commercial market, to obviously track the product through the system so they know to prevent any diversion, obviously to make sure we collect all the revenue, to look for trends, to make sure patients aren't getting more than they're prescribed, if there's ever an issue with the medicine, be it on the potency level, mold issue, so on and so forth. Again, just like we track, you know, the RE, the other pharmaceuticals you might get from the pharmacy and so forth, that seed to sale tracking system is in place. And essentially, it would be a third-party entity, there would be an RFP for it. Microsoft actually just got even into that business, some of you might have heard in the coming weeks, looking at that. So in a real quick 5,000-foot overview, that is essentially what this three package of bills aims to do, to set up the commercial side and setting up for fair and equitable patient access for their medicine. Because as you look at the overall, there was initially set up, yeah, it's great if you have a green thumb yourself and you can grow your own medicine for your ailment is and get the right strand you need through the caregiver network, or you can find a good caregiver to cultivate for you. However, just like in any sort of manufacturing, in particular with an agricultural play, obviously there's a lot of scrutiny and issues that can come about, so you could actually lose your medicine, your crop. So this is actually allowing for the safe, constant access of the medicine for the patients who need it. So that's what the bill's aiming to do. Kind of a million-dollar question, wherever we at today, what do these bills all mean they've been hanging out there for a while? So we're in the second year of, a two-year, little bit of civics update here, of a legislative session. So all bills that have been introduced in 2015 or that are in 2016 have to be done by the end of this year, by December 31st, or they go away. You have to reintroduce them if you so choose in the next legislative session. So I bring that up because that kind of helps us because the clock is ticking a little bit. The bills, the package of bills are all House bills, so they start over in our House. They almost unanimously passed out of the House. The vote counts were 95 to 11, 96 to 10, and 99 to 7 is how they went down. So bipartisan, almost unanimous, the bills passed the House. That was at the end of last year. They've got stuck a little bit over in the Senate, in the Senate Judiciary Committee is where they sit now. And so essentially, in a nutshell, what we're going to, the next move is when the legislature is fully back in September, they're only in one day this month, on the 13th, and one day next month, but in September when they come back and then as they ramp up for their fall session, we'll look to discharge the bills from the Judiciary Committee to the Senate floor for consideration and passage. So the aim is to have something moving come September, so this isn't what's called a lame duck issue, which is really, you know, they have to pass or they fail as you get closer into December. So they're trying to get in the earlier fall to go through things. And essentially, if and when these bills pass, the way the effective date is set up and the timeframe that is in there, it's essentially a total of 270 days from when the governor signs it before the first person could go up to the new licensing board to apply for an application. There's 90 days from effective date, plus 180 days for LORA to set up their departmental needs, hiring, and so forth. Essentially, three quarters of a year before they can apply.
Justin, do you happen to know whether or not the governor intends to sign these bills if they're passed by the Senate?
Yes, great question, and yes, I can confidently say that the governor and his senior policy people have been part of discussions all the way along. The Michigan Municipal League has been, the Township Association, the Village Association, Michigan State Police, sheriffs, local police chiefs, prosecutors, obviously industry who I represent in our firm, all those stakeholders have been at the table and understand that it's been around since 2008. You have a number of municipalities that are essentially coming up with, you know, their own interpretations and rules. There really seem to be impediments to say, yes, we need to get this passed.
Thank you. Chris?
Same question, but for the Judiciary Committee in the Senate, since it's been sitting there and it seems to be popular with the House and popular with the governor.
Yep.
Bluntly, can you tell us what the issue is?
Sure.
And what the impediments are for moving in September?
Sure, great question, I'll speak very candidly. So essentially, in the Senate, we only have 38 members, so there is less members on the committee naturally. So essentially, we have five members on that. The chair is Senator Jones, who is a former sheriff in Ingham County, and he is a very big champion supporter of the bills. He wants to get them passed, he's one of the cheerleaders, he sees the need, he understands, you know, this needs to be passed, since our Constitution has been. You also have Senator Bida from the Warren area, which we have worked with Warren on a local ordinance of late as well. He's very strong and on board with the policy. Then our three other members, we have a little bit of issues with in some form or fashion. Senator Pat Kolbeck from the Canton area, very free-market principled individual, he likes the policy except for he doesn't like any sort of taxation or licensure. So that's very difficult, if we were to try to give up or bend on any sort of licensure or taxation, well, we kind of lose a lot of stakeholders and the like. You have Senator Tanya Shoemaker from the West Side of the state, she is looking at some other higher positions, in particular, the Attorney General's position further. So she, right now, is kind of iffy on if it's going to be a populous vote or not. And then we also have Senator from Sterling Heights, Senator Tori Raca, and he's looking to run for judge, and again, not sure if it's the best vote for him. So quite candidly, I'd kind of share that with you, their background, they all understand the need for the policy, so what we're looking for is to do a discharge. And so what that means is, because if they could put up for a vote, if you don't have the votes, the bills die. No one wants to see that happen, the majority of the caucuses as well, so we're going to ask for a discharge if those folks aren't forced to vote in committee, and then we take it to the full Senate, which you have all the 38 senators looking at the policy and voting on it. So we're looking for a discharge from that committee down to the Senate floor for passage. We're pushing for that, actually, the last time I was going to speak to her, I was in Lansing on the last session, to do just that. However, as you might have caught in the news, the DPS deal went to about 1:30 in the morning, and there was a lot of tensions within the chamber, within the House and Senate, and essentially it wasn't in the cards that day to bring up that sort of policy. So with that, I'm getting more confident saying that we are looking at a September fall issue with, of course, the ultimate backstop being lamed up to push it through.
Sure. Lori?
Chris, can you get copies of some of the ordinance from the communities you rattled off? I think they were Inster and...
Warren, Commerce, Troy, Burton, Flint, Lansing, Detroit.
Inster actually came out of our office.
Oh, excellent.
So you can probably get us that.
I can get you Insters. Candidly, I'm not sure you'd be interested in Insters. Inster looks at this as an economic development opportunity, and, or at least, a slim majority of their elected officials saw it as an economic development opportunity. So theirs is set up, Justin, let me know what your thoughts on this, but theirs is set up to bring them in. Whereas I would imagine that ours would be set up to control very tightly, bring them to only specific places and only specific types. That seems to be my read, but we will get into it once it becomes relevant to get into. But I can bring you Insters, I just don't know that it's a model.
I think it'd be interesting to see theirs.
Sure.
Compared to some of the others.
Sure, and a firm down, we can also look at, you know, through the demographics, you know, obviously, the Village of Oxford is a very unique characteristic, and we've got to look at, you know, specific, your master plan, everything, when we're looking at the global picture here. We can pick and choose and kind of pull from these other like municipalities that have put together ordinances, kind of see how it fits and doesn't fit for, you know, for the Village of Oxford.
Great, thank you.
Adam, Gary, one question. One question for you, Jason. What will be our window of time, let's assume, for example, Lansing takes action in November? Okay? And so the clock now starts ticking as to that three-quarters of a year where it's supposed to be pretty much implemented or people can act on it.
Correct.
So that is, within, with, of that three-quarters of a year, how, what is our window to formulate our own local guidance?
Sure. I would advise that you are kind of using that timeframe for once it's passed up until when the, you can actually apply for, is looking at that three-quarters of a year to really develop your policy. You already have a number of surrounding municipalities that already have ordinances in place that are simply going to amend them or open them more to allow for more of the commercial ones that are currently set forth. So I would really try to target that window. There is nothing precluding you from, you know, not acting on it, then you just don't have the local opt-in, of course, but really with the various municipalities around you and ones we're, you know, discussions with, they're all looking at it and they're shooting for, you know, doing it essentially soon after the passage. Because looking at how do they best service their citizens, where is the right place within the community for these sort of licenses? And so, you know, most folks are taking it proactive, but we've also seen in other states where folks, you know, will, you know, just come on board as time goes on as well.
So there isn't an absolute...
There isn't an absolute, no.
Alright, if there was any more questions for Justin?
If you please. I'm one of the new members of the commission, so I'm not really familiar with who you are.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'm kind of curious as to how you plug into this and what exactly your role is.
Sure. Yeah, sorry. That's right.
You know, that could be, but that's okay.
Yeah, sorry, we just kind of jumped into it. So I'm actually resident in Orion Township, and I was the planning commissioner there, so I know the labor of love and the thankless hours you guys put in. And so, but the, our firm, Dynastic Assault Development, is a full-service government affairs consulting organization. And so we got brought onto this particular piece of policy last year, after we got approached by a couple of different groups looking for representation in Lansing to try to get this policy moving. They've been trying to push this package of bills for a number of years now, and we're very close at the end of last session, but just fell short. So we did a little soul searching and looking, and I saw what we did in Orion and other communities I've done some work in, in addition to the stuff we do at the state level, and said, you know what, we really need to come up with a closed regulated system to allow for fair access for the patients and to be fair to the local municipalities, to give some direction and say, here, here's the framework, here's what you folks should be looking at to, you know, regulate these sort of uses. So that's when our firm got engaged, was at the beginning of last year in particular on this policy. But our firm has been around since 2002, providing governmental affairs at the state, some federal and local level where appropriate.
Fantastic, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Your comments are very welcome.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, looking to be a resource for your folks, and as we've gotten engaged with this, we've traveled to other states with regulators, talked to other states, as well as worked with a number of municipalities. So we just want to give you kind of update where we're at, begin, you know, having those conversations with you folks to see what's going to be right for the Village of Oxford. Thank you very much.
All right, Justin, thank you very much. Okay. So, we have something hopefully down the road, we look forward to with respect to some at least defined guidance from the state legislature. All right, moving on, electronic signs, message signs for the benefit of the new members. This was an issue that came before the board on a number of occasions. There's something of a breakdown there provided by Chris Corey.
Thank you, Chris.
Regarding the, kind of the history leading up to this point. And the, there was action taken by this board to keep LEDs as a special use with a set of criteria. The village council, upon reviewing that recommendation, chose to just simply eliminate any LED signage within the Village of Oxford. And since that time, I guess there was a request within or to the village board to throw it back to the planning commission to either confirm their position as no LEDs permitted, or to draw whatever exclusions or policies might, or guidelines that might address them. So if there's any questions that you have right now, I would ask that you direct them to Chris if there's any, you know, technical questions with respect to what he provided, provided us in paper here.
Chris, did you have any prepared remarks over and above what you've submitted to us already?
No, I think that unless you would like me to walk through the timeline, I think that just questions would be good. I do think that it would be good to have some sort of resolution of this issue, or at least a decision on a pathway forward. So I think we should probably discuss it with that in mind. But if there's any questions on the timeline that I provided, or what the proposed standards were in the recommended version that went to council, let me know.
I think that there's been a number of discussions that we've had in the past. I think that the feelings of the board has kind of more or less covered the entire spectrum of them. I think probably each and every member may have their own feeling or conviction as to how LEDs play into the core, or actually, really what we're talking about is the entire village as a whole, whether it was east or west on Verdic, north or south on Washington, Glasby Industrial, Glasby Commercial. I, you know, I welcome each and every planning commissioner to their feelings or opinions about it. I think eventually what we need to do is take action and give direction back to the village council as to what our position is. I won't make any secret of it, I'm very much opposed to LEDs myself, as a personal position on it, by no means that of the planning commission. I think that they're not appropriate to the historic mission of what Oxford is evolving and can be, but hasn't yet reached its full potential to reflect into, despite, I think the one way of slowing traffic, anything else, is give people something to look at when they pass through, other than bling, quite frankly. Ms. Staley?
I'm opposed as well. I've watched the ones that we, that are out there at the bank especially, and they're just not suitable for us, in my opinion. So.
You tell me.
I think, when you look at this map, every property that would be allowed to have an electronic sign is almost directly across from a residential section, and I would hate to live across from one. I would hate to see that out my window all the time, with the exception of the industrial, which it would just be electronic sign after electronic sign after electronic sign. I would like to deny the council's request that we amend to allow these. I don't want them.
Mr. Teague?
On a case-by-case basis, that's how I feel, is the appropriate way to determine what's needed and what's not, and probably in most cases, the majority, they're probably not, they don't fit. But, you know, there is that one, one-by-one case, and, you know, I look at everyone individually.
Mr. Johnson?
As stated earlier, my primary concern is looking at this future map of available properties and residential's all around. That's, that's my biggest concern. Again, I would, I would hate to live next to them, and that, so I would, I would have to see in that the proposed C1 transition would allow for them, and living so near to them, I would be against it.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Chairman, I happen to agree with you. I've lived in communities where unrestrained growth of signage has cheapened and destroyed the visual appeal and the aesthetic of a community. I would, personally, I would hate to see that happen here. I don't, personally, I don't have any data to back this up, but I don't find them to be a very effective means of advertisement. I think that they have a potential to be a distraction to the drivers who should be focusing on what they're doing at hand, and we have enough of that already in all the communities, I think. And aesthetically, I think they're cheap and unattractive, and I'd hate to see us allow this, because I believe there's going to be a profusion of them. You know, we've already opened the door to a certain extent by allowing a few special uses, and, you know, the door, the cat's out of the bag, if you will. But I would be all in favor of shutting this down and not allowing any more.
That being the case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, and I think this is what we have to do, but I'm, let me know if I'm wrong, Chris, to inform the village council that the planning commission has re-reviewed the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance section, and would again, like to deny the request to allow the electronic signs.
Okay.
Is that a correct motion?
I believe so, because that was, it was under the review.
I guess the only thing I might have some concern with is the word deny. I would just say that, because the adopted version prohibits them. So I'd say that what you want to do is keep the language that prohibits electronic signs.
Okay, to inform the village council that we have re-reviewed the sign ordinance section of the zoning ordinance.
You could say you recommend no changes to the adopted sign ordinance.
Okay, and recommend no changes to the adopted sign ordinance.
It was that sign ordinance that the village council adopted with the provision that there would be no LEDs allowed in the Village of Oxford. So that is consistent with what?
So that's my motion.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. I would request a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Deeg?
Gary Deeg?
Yes. Commissioner Douglas?
In favor.
Commissioner DeVall?
Yes.
Commissioner Helmut?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion, Gary. Item C.
All the sign ordinance comes up every month.
Item C, outdoor cafe tax amendment for year-round option. I think when we first, this was first brought up to us, there was a number of elements to this review. It appears that, Chris, maybe you can review just a little bit as to your list regarding outside dining and just exactly what we're looking at, other than, I guess, adding the standards, add the standards for winter outdoor dining. That is an issue, I think, in and of itself. I think the review process, if there is any deviations of that for the benefit of the board, when a merchant wishes to apply for outside dining, there is a process in which they go through with respect to guidelines in order to lay, laying that out, terms and conditions with which they must operate in order to maintain that opportunity to do, to have outside dining. That process comes before this planning commission. We review it and we approve it based on that. So Chris, other than the addition, the additional option for year-round winter outside dining, what other elements of this review is important for us to be aware of?
Sure. So like you said, the one, one question is, do you want to allow outdoor dining in the winter and how? And the other is sort of process, there's actually two process-based ideas here. Right now, if a restaurant wants to have outdoor dining, they have to come into the village council, they have to apply for a special use, which costs a little fee, and then they have to wait for the special use to be noticed in the newspaper 15 days in advance. They have to come, come before you where there is a public hearing, and where they're judged both on objective criteria, whether they meet the specific standards of how they're supposed to operate, and also on subjective criteria, wherein your discretion is the planning commission, whether you think outdoor dining is appropriate. Then, once that's finished, they have to go to the village council and ask for, excuse me, if they want to use public property, if they want to use a public sidewalk on either side of the building downtown, or any public sidewalk, then they have to go to the village council and get permission to use that public sidewalk. Then they have to go to MDOT if they want to use the sidewalk in front along M24 and get their permission. So the question is, is there a way that we can make this a little less onerous on business owners, or do we find each element of that process important? The one, the two sort of low-hanging fruit that you could potentially remove is, number one is the special use requirement. So if you just require it as a planning commission approval, and you take away the subjective element, the public hearing, and the notice requirement. So all I have to do is come to a public hearing, they just have to get their materials in by the deadline two weeks in advance, come to your meeting, and you review, and I review it against the specific objective criteria, you review those as well, and they get their approval if they meet the objective criteria. Check all the boxes, you're done. No, well, do we like it or not? Just, just check the boxes and you're done. And the other one would be?
Pardon me, Chris?
Yeah.
Then they would still need to go before the village council.
Village council, if they want to, if they want to use public property.
Public property, and then also to MDOT.
If they want to use M24 right of way.
M24 right of way.
If I might.
For some, if they want to use private property, those latter two steps don't matter.
The process is they go to the village council first.
Oh, sorry, Joe, okay.
Then they go to the planning commission. Once the planning commission approves it, and MDOT, just make sure they have the insurance.
Yeah. MDOT's requirement is not a huge burden, except for the fact that you have to go to MDOT and work through their process. Their actual requirements are not different.
MDOT's requirement will not go away regardless.
That's true.
That is their terms, that is their condition, and you're not going to, that's not even really an element of this, because we have no control over that.
That's true.
I guess, you know, with respect to the winter dining, my only concern about that would be heating. If you're going to have, if you're going to offer service during the winter months, I have to believe the, there would be the intent of the business owner to provide some kind of heating. And, you know, or I don't know, I'm just, that's just, that's an assumption, I don't know. It would be those, if indeed they were, it would be some guidance on what those heating devices were, how they comply. So, I mean, that's really a health and safety issue, as far as, to me, if they want to, you know, do that year-round, I guess, I don't really see the, I don't see a big issue with that. The one thing, though, about, I think it's important to keep in mind, at least for me, it's very important that if indeed there is going to be use of public property, then it is a process that needs to go through a very thorough review, okay? We are allowing the use of public property for private enterprise. And I don't think that asking for the steps that we have in the past is too much of a burden. The other thing is that with respect to those that currently have outside dining, we have, it has been a remarkably smooth process. In many cases, we have, we have approvals that exist right now, and the business isn't even ready to open and probably won't be ready to open for a period of time. The proprietors of those businesses have been very proactive in coming to us well in advance. So I, I don't really see where our current process has been a burden to the property owner whatsoever. And frankly, if you're going to create outside dining, it's not something that should be done on a whim, okay? Think about it this week, do it next week. If you're going to do it and you're going to use public property, then a great deal of thought needs to go into it on both sides of the deal, you know? Maureen?
I'm not even sure if this planning commission has the right to let somebody use public property without sending it to the village council.
You're absolutely right. And my point is that by our involvement is just one more additional element of public review, okay? We review it before the audience of the community.
I do think if it's going to be on private property, they probably don't need the public hearing, but if it's going to be on public property, they do.
And that's a good question. Do you recall when the TAP did theirs, theirs was done on private property?
And they did require?
Did they go through a public hearing?
They did.
Okay.
And that's, and if that's something that we think would be useful to help out our business community, and maybe to incentivize using private property instead of public, if we, if we think we want to do that, to say, the use of public property is a special use, use of private property is permitted, provided to meet standards 1215, and get the planning commission to approve. So, I mean, that's, that's one option.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
McCann had previously submitted to the village council forms from other communities that included a permit for year-round outdoor cafe, and also had a permit for the heating unit as well. So the only, those are the only two items that, I mean, the special use process, that's fine, continue with that, it's just a question of how, if you're going to allow year-round, then how is that going to be handled? And then if you want to add in the heating unit thing, I mean, it's got to meet the safety code anyway. But just to let you know, there were forms from other communities that we had.
Well, that sounds, if we are going to consider expanding our outside dining to a year-round activity, we need to get that information, I guess.
Sure, and yeah, I can provide that type of information, so we have a more detailed discussion, as well as some potential language for how we would change the ordinance to allow it.
Okay. Well, with that said, I guess we can just ask that this, this particular, unless anybody else has any other comments, Gary, Bonnie?
What?
Any other comments regarding this issue?
My only concern would be if they use public land, is the village going to have any expense as far as maintenance? I think that would be one.
If they're going to use, I'm sorry, say that again.
If they're going to be on public land, is the village going to come into a certain expense for maintenance, you know, upkeep of that land, or?
Well, that's been an element that's accompanied every one that we have done so far, you know, and that's part of the review process, to hope that that doesn't happen. I guess snow removal might be an element of outside, of winter outside dining that maybe, obviously, it isn't in the middle of July, you know? So if you are intruding on the walkable space of a parking lot, I think probably if you're going to have a year-round, you may want to take into account snow removal. You know, there's probably a litany of things that we can't even, don't even know right now, but well, maybe when we get into it and have further discussion, we'll, those elements will surface, I suppose. So I would say that we just take this item and keep it as old business for our next agenda item. If that's okay with you.
Yep.
Okay.
I have some instructions, so I'll bring some more detail and thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Under new business, master plan, redevelopment plan, near east side parks and rec master plan.
All right. Thanks, everyone. This is the third of three presentations on the master plan, walking the planning commission through what the master plan committee included in the documents. Tonight's presentation will focus on the Parks and Recreation Plan and the Near East Side Redevelopment Plan. The Parks and Recreation Plan, as many of you know, has very strict standards that it must meet by the state, and then we submitted it to the state specifically to MDNR and makes us eligible for parks grants. This plan, if adopted and then submitted and approved by the state, would make us eligible for their grant programs, including trust fund grants, passport grants, a few others, from 2017 until 2021. And so, the plan includes a five-year action plan that covers those years, 2017 to 2021. It's fairly simple, we're a small village, we only have two parks, but this was done in conjunction with Ron Davis at the Parks and Recreation Department, which serves the township and the village, and he was a member of the master plan committee and helped out with this five-year action plan. One of the highest priorities that was envisioned by the master plan committee is ADA accessibility. So, when we look at 2017, stuff we want to do very quickly is ADA accessibility improvements, especially on our nature trails, and it's called an ADA transition plan, which is basically an overview of where we're deficient from an ADA standpoint in our parks and what we need to do to get to a point where our parks are more accessible. So, it's the goal to do that plan in 2017 so we can start implementing that down the line. One of our first implementation activities, we'd hope, with the ADA activity would come in about 2018, with upgraded playground equipment at Scripter Park, which would have some accessible elements. I don't know that we want to aim for universal accessibility, which is to say the entire playscape is accessible, because that does reduce the opportunities for exercise for other kids, but we definitely want to make it more accessible. In 2019, we talked about having a new fishing dock at the north pond in Scripter Park, that's not Round Lake, that's the north pond, north of the baseball fields. In 2020, a little more focus on Centennial Park, we could put an informational kiosk that would give information on events, local businesses, et cetera, and then potentially an event pavilion for Scripter Park, which could be rented out and potentially produce some revenue. And then in 2021, this is a little more broad, open-ended, because that's five, six years from now, we look at Scripter Park and then try to make a determination then of what new amenities would be needed, and those would be included in potentially our next Parks and Recreation Plan, which we would undertake in 2021 to become eligible for grant programs in the following five years. So, that colors the Parks and Recreation Plan. Moving on to the Near East Side Plan, which is similar to the Near West Side and South Water Plans that I talked about last meeting, it's a redevelopment plan, part of the master plan, it's our vacant undeveloped incompatible parcels, and we have the three levels of analysis. So, I'm not going to go through, unless anyone wants me to, what those three levels are. Again, I did last time. This is the potential updated future land use map. And to get into the redevelopment sites specifically, first one, and I think a very important one, is the Oxford Bank site. Oxford Bank, obviously, is a valued member of our business community, they support many of our other businesses, they're the business that makes the rest of the businesses grow, but they are, right now, their piece of land is highly underutilized. If you look at this aerial photo, I think it shows it pretty clearly, they have their branch, they have their financial center in the back, and then they have 88 parking spaces, which the parking study showed us were never full, even on the busiest Friday of the year. And they have two green vacant lots, here and here, that are potential development sites. We have on this relatively crude drawing, a potential idea of how this site can be redeveloped without moving Oxford Bank, well, without moving their branch office. They're already thinking potentially of consolidating from that financial center. If a new building was to be built on the site, then they would consolidate everything into that building, but this keeps the existing building on the corner of Stanton and Washington in place, but then adds another building to the south along Washington with just one parking entrance in between instead of three. It adds another smaller building, adds smaller buildings on Broadway and on Stanton to continue the street walls there and improve walkability, and then again, just channelized parking entrances. And then facing Mill Street, where there's residential on the far side, some residential uses, potentially some townhomes or something like that. This is just an idea of what a new building on that site could potentially look like. So, how are we going to get there? We're going to work with Oxford Bank to make sure they stay in our community, I mean, we're named after our community, they're a very important business, but what can we do on the site while they're still there? We want to revise the form-based code so that side of the site that's on Mill Street is not treated the same as the side that fronts Washington or the sides that front Stanton and Broadway, because Mill Street, like I said, has residential on the opposite side. And then, as more of a short-term goal, we want to be able to use that large parking lot for overflow public parking. We've had preliminary discussions with Oxford Bank already, and hopefully we can move that forward to something more formal. As I mentioned with the parking study, that's already happening on an informal basis behind everyone's back. People are already parking there to go to the movies. How can we formalize that and allow that parking lot to be an asset for downtown? The next one is the Hampton Block site, another one that I think is very important. This is a key location in the community between the residential neighborhoods to the east and the downtown to the west, and right now, it's extremely underutilized, it's sort of a quasi-operational business, there's blocks and stones and stuff sitting there. So, what can we do with it in the future? We know that the property owner is willing to sell but asking a lot of money, so should that potentially change? The vision potentially would be to bring residential to this site. One key facet of this, design-wise, is to build a new road that would serve residential development running from Stanton here up to Verdic alongside the post office. You want to have some buffer from the side of the post office to the residential, and then, just with the funky shape of the site, and our urban designer, when they took a look at it, did put in this green space at Stanton and Broadway right here, and I know I've had a couple of people come to me and say, we think that a park there would be a really good idea. So, there's, I think, potentially an opportunity for that on this site, especially if it's developed through a PUD and we can maybe trade a little more density for the park on the corner. The other aspect of this site that is potentially interesting is the house at the corner of Broadway and Glasby. It's one house on a big lot. Would the owner be willing to sell to a developer to give a more, a more broad Broadway frontage for the potential redevelopment? I don't know, but the plan envisions that potentially happening. This is one idea of what townhouses on that site would look like. I think this is, I like this because it's a little more small-scale than some of the stuff that we see, right? It's only two stories, it's got a little front yard, it's got a nice front porch for each unit, you don't walk up a ton of stairs to a big second-floor entrance, it's not fronted with garages. So, this is kind of a typology I think we'd hope to see. And again, we may want to, we're going to want to look at revising the form-based code, which you may be getting the idea that that's the next step here with a lot of this, to get this kind of idea. Another redevelopment site, this is actually multiple sites kind of lumped together, 40 to 80 North Washington. So, when you get north of the downtown, we've got some empty lots, we've got a few houses. I think this picture actually really demonstrates it pretty well. I mean, you're immediately north of downtown and you start to get an empty lots, homes, and some other, some smaller businesses that don't really fit together. Not that we want to get rid of any businesses or anything like that, but do we want a more consistent development pattern? So, what are we going to do to get there? The thought here, and we talked about this on South Washington, when we get just outside of the downtown, is to allow this landscape setback with a connecting sidewalk behind it, so people can walk from business to business, they're not right up alongside M-24. And I think Mr. Schneider pointed out last meeting that he's actually developed on his own a similar concept to that at White House Village Shops, where the houses are connected by a second sidewalk right up at their porches rather than the public sidewalk along the road. So, something like that. We're also hoping to see an alley from east to center, which would allow the parking to be in behind, and that would allow that connection. And another idea with this is because these sites are not that deep, that we can get a little more parking in here, and I don't know if this is going to be seen, but we have, we put narrow buildings in the front, which would basically be retail, maybe you could fit something on the second floor, but you wouldn't have a lot of depth to the building. So, you're really not talking about a whole lot, just enough to give you some sort of street frontage between larger buildings and then more parking in behind. Whoops, wrong way. Again, this is going to take a little bit of revision of the form-based code to get there, and it's multiple different property owners, I know Mr. Schneider's one of them. So, if there's anything consistent to go on, there may have to be some land assembly, but I think this vision can be implemented on a site-by-site basis. Moving on to the character change areas, along Center Street. This is sort of an interesting road that we have. One end of it is commercial along Washington, the other end is actually, there's an apartment complex, and then there's a little squat cinder block building that's been rezoned to C1 transition on the idea that there was no residential conversion possible. And then, actually, across Log Street, you have, actually, industrial properties. They're not planned and zoned that way, but they are industrial right now. So, what do we do with these houses in the middle? The other aspect of this is you've got the Polyand Trail on the north side, which is a great asset on one hand, but on the other hand, the homes on the north side are literally in the shadow of it. The bridge rises right there, and you actually do get shadow from it. So, many of these homes have been subdivided into apartments, they're rentals, but we're not that far from the downtown, so what can we do here? And the thought here is sort of a site-by-site, potentially slow redevelopment from these subdivided, single-family homes that are maybe starting to dilapidate to a more modern, updated concept of almost the same thing with the townhouse idea. This would, we'd require moving Center Street into the form-based code, which is not currently in, whoops, and then allowing, and I think this is one, as with all these character change areas, it's more about allowing this potential change that potentially increases the value of the properties, rather than really proactively going in and trying to arrange property and all that. East Street is another one. This one is interesting because the southern half of the block is parking. It's the northeast quadrant parking lot, and you have to get about halfway down the block from west to east before you find any houses. So, what can we do here in an area surrounded by parking and businesses? And again, we're looking at a little bit more density in the residential. There's a big technical planning zoning issue here, and that is that we currently have some houses that are zoned and planned for parking. And the master plan committee said, we don't want those torn down for parking. We want to either keep them as they are or tear them down for another residential use. So, that's actually a major change in the master plan and zoning ordinance that this plan envisions. Broadway, a long street, relatively long by village streets that aren't M-24 standards. It's got Critten and Oxford Bank on one end, it's got houses and Hampton Block on the other, it's got a little quasi-industrial building where Village Building, which is Dave Wackel's company, has their offices and storage. And so, what do we do with this? Well, the other aspect to it is, it's zoned on one end, on one side of the street, C1 transition all the way across, and to some extent, I think on the far east, you've got some multiple family. South side's zoned, single-family. Well, streets are uniters, not dividers, so putting those two uses across from each other doesn't really make sense. What we need is a more, a street that becomes a transition zone from our downtown to the residential neighborhoods to the south. So, again, we're focusing on, and I know this is starting to sound like a broken record, but we really think that increasing the density of residential near the downtown is very important for the health of our downtown, and these character change areas have largely been targeted at potential spots for that. Broadway, I think, is very good for that, and making the zoning consistent on both sides is a good way to do that. Now, you do have some houses along here that are architecturally important, and so, this is another area where incorporating into the form-based code historic homes as a permitted use, permitted type, so they're not considered nonconformities, would be helpful, so they're not going to get, not to, so we don't incentivize them being torn down or harm their redevelopment. Planning clarification area. This is Verdic and Glasby. I was asked specifically about this by the planning commission, or the master plan committee was asked to address it. There are two homes and then a little multi-tenant, commercial, industrial building. The whole thing is zoned and planned for single families. The question is, what's the future of that commercial industrial building? The master plan committee's answer to that was, let's allow them to stay in place, but we're not going to proactively try to turn this into a commercial or industrial district. So, zone residential right now, we'll leave it zoned residential, but the master plan has a sentence in it basically saying, if that commercial building wants to rezone itself to a category where it's not non-conforming, like C2 maybe, then we'd support that rezoning just for that building. But, we're not going to, we're not going to go in and rezonate ourselves, we're not going to rezone the houses, we're just going to see if the property owner needs that for financing or something and they need that rezoning, then we will grant it. Other than that, we're not going to change anything. Last is 98 Glasby. Some of you still bear the scars from earlier this year, but the plan for this, in the plan, is to develop it. However, very specifically, the plan says no PUDs. The plan says, redevelop it under the density required by zoning. And it also would allow for a, right now, it's split-zoned R1 and R3, it would allow for rezoning to get the whole thing to any single-family category, R1, R2, or R3. It also would allow rezoning to R1 multiple-family, but would restrict whoever does that to these density standards in multiple-family, in R1, RM1, not RM2. So, basically, we're relying on our zoning ordinance to give us what we want here, but we do have some specific ideas of what a development on this site should have. The biggest one to me is it needs to complement and connect to the park. I don't want to see houses where they all backed the park, they put up a fence, and they complain about kids hitting a ball through their window because of the baseball field right there. We need something that connects to the park. And that, there's all sorts of creative ways to do that, you know, and will a developer like them? I don't know. But one way to do it is to turn the houses around, put in a driveway to garages in back, and a walkway between the houses and the park, maybe stairs down that hill that goes to the baseball field, and face the park. You could also do the same thing with the lake, face the lake. Now, we know that the neighbors on both sides are very interested in keeping the trees at both ends of the property, so, you know, we'd want to see a developer either keep the trees or replace them with similar trees. And we know that stormwater runoff is very important on this site. The 98 Glasby proposal from Mr. Schneider had a very, I thought, progressive way of dealing with the stormwater, would like to see something like that replicated on any other development. Now, where are we going with this next? Our 60-day comment period's still ongoing, we're about halfway through. On July 19th, at your next meeting, I'll be bringing you a list of comments and proposed revisions that we've gotten through the comment period, both from this body and from the public. I believe the public hearing is looking like it's going to be August 23rd, based on when the comment period ends, and you'll make a recommendation at that meeting. And then, I think, someone can correct me on this date, but September 13th, I think, would then be the next council meeting after that, so that would be the adoption, and we'd be able to wrap this project up and have it in place for any developers that need the revised master plan in place and be able to begin work on all those form-based code revisions that I keep talking about.
Chris, the meeting in August will be the 16th.
16th? Oh, okay.
The first and third for the planning commission.
Yeah, all right. Clearly, I was looking at my calendar wrong. Okay, 16th is fine. It'll be the second meeting in August is the point. So, that's where we're moving to. I'll take any questions or suggestions at this point. Thanks. I'm going to take them over there, so I can write them down.
Yeah, I guess, Bonnie, do you have any questions for Chris?
Well, I'm kind of taking it all in right now.
Okay.
I had a question about not allowing the PUD at 98 Glasby. It just seems odd that we would tire ourselves to a restriction like that on one piece of property.
Yeah. I think the idea behind that, and again, we can soften the language if you want, but the idea behind that was that we have density standards for a reason, and that in some places, it makes sense to do a PUD, change the density in exchange for something else. But, the master plan committee almost felt like we tried that, it wasn't popular and it wasn't approved. So, we want to see anything that gets built, is going to be, have to be built. Right.
I think, we heard the public comments from our recent PUD application for there, and I think if there was another PUD application, we would definitely think about the last one. I just really think that it's tying our hands in case somebody wants to come and put, I don't know, something with like a little party store in front and a residential in the back, or... in the back, or which, I mean, I don't know, but...
I can soften it to say that we would consider a PUD for connections to the park or mixed use, but not to increase residential density. Or do you want me to even to, I can soften even further and just say that the plan discourages high density or something like that?
There's a lot of reasons for a PUD, not just density.
Yeah, although a lot of times, what we end up doing with...
For some reasons, I...
Is increasing the density, because that's the easiest thing to put some money in the developer's pocket, so they'll spend some money helping out the community with what we want. But yes, the, there are a number of reasons to do it. And I can, if the commission wants, we can soften the language on that. My only concern is that it seems to me that a development on that site is going to be successful only if it can do things, not only if, but more likely to be successful if it can do things by right. When we start getting discretionary approvals, that's when we're going to have the knock-down, drag-out fights we've seen before.
I just thought that was, and then, and one question that actually comes from the last meeting. I was hoping to catch her before she left, but Jean Davidson with a J and a D. She had concerns about the one-way going to Hudson and would rather have stopped at Hovey.
Yeah.
What was, it's 20 feet. I'm not sure what the difference is. I'm wondering what her concern was.
I think it's so eastbound traffic can get to Hovey to turn south. And I think it was a good point, and I'm just going to bring it up at the next meeting. It's in my list to bring up at the next meeting in terms of things that, specifics that have been suggested, and whether the planning commission wants to alter the draft.
And to your point on that, Mo, I don't want to interrupt your comments, but there was an exchange between you and a gentleman that lived at 40 Hovey. There was an email exchange regarding kind of that same issue with a different perspective to some degree. My question isn't his specifics. It is, I guess, the manner in which we are going to log this input, okay?
Yeah.
I was copied on your correspondence with Scott Wheeler. I believe that was the gentleman's name. And I would like, if possible, for you to keep a log of that kind of correspondence that may not come directly to a commissioner or myself, so we can review all of that.
That's...
It's really important that the content of his concerns via your email exchange was recorded just like Mr. ...
Absolutely. Now...
Which was also about the one-way.
Right. I just, I couldn't figure out what the difference was. It's seriously 15, 20 feet, but that makes sense.
Mr. Wheeler had a different perspective on it, which would be interesting, too, whether, you know, the one-way is going to create a lot of community input before it's done, okay?
Yeah, that's going to need its own public input process.
Yeah, it's going to really be part, almost separate in and of itself, some of the other elements of this.
But I think we, that's actually, it's interesting, because this is only 20 feet, but it, there's a, that is a discussion I think we should have, because we've had, as John points out, two residents come with conflicting points of view. So I think the planning commission made...
So there's a lot of, the spectrum is pretty broad on that one.
Yeah, that the idea was, and they were from residents thinking, "Okay, how is this going to impact traffic on my street?"
Right.
And so the idea, like I said, eastbound Dennison to southbound Hovey, a lot, making sure we allow that access, that's one person's perspective. The other perspective was, well, if you, if you do allow that access, people are going to have to turn right on Hovey if, as they come east on Dennison, and then they're going to drive past Scott Wheeler's house. So then he was advocating for keeping the one-way to Hudson, so that that would, that traffic wouldn't exist. So this is...
Well, there's also EMS concerns. There's also public safety issues. I mean, there's a lot of things that have...
And then school right there, an elementary school.
Yeah. And it may be that that, that 20 feet needs to be left more ambiguous in the plan, specifically, to specifically say the plan, that the decision of whether to, the one-way stands to Hovey or to Hudson will be worked out in conjunction with the traffic engineer and further public input.
Mr. Teague, is there any...
Not this time.
Yeah. Can I get a little further clarification on the connector between, the proposed connector between Glaspie and Lepire? What was the main driver behind that?
You mean the one south of Marketplace?
Yeah.
Actually, I might direct that to Joe, who's been involved with discussions of township on that, the connector road to Glaspie Street.
Yeah, and it's part of a development that they approved their zoning board of appeals for development of that property in the rear on the south. And as desired by the Marketplace was in favor of the road as well.
But the purpose of the road, right, Mr. Johnson, you're asking, is, is it a truck bypass of downtown?
Two questions. Is it meant to be a truck bypass? And a lot of the discussion was meant to kind of limit the amount of cut-through traffic as well.
Yeah.
So opening up a road there, I mean, I'm greatly in favor of developing a truck bypass, if that is the primary reason for that development. If that is the case, I would like to have that stated and try to encourage that usage.
Do we think that a truck bypass using Glaspie is appropriate? Because I know that there's, I know that that's sort of its own discussion, because there is also residential and the park on Glaspie.
Well, the eastbound traffic, obviously, would be much better to have them called Glaspie and Minnetaka than the acute right angle down top.
No, yeah, yeah.
In that sense, yes.
I don't, there's, I don't think there's any way to get around that, but when they're going from the south industrial area to Ray Road...
They can't, because from north, from Burdick Street north, it is not a Class A road.
Right.
Does not meet the truck standards. So up to the Ray Road, that road is not meet truck standards, so it cannot be, it'd have to be rebuilt to meet this truck standards.
Okay.
South Glaspie, north Glaspie does not meet the road construction standards.
Even though the trucks go on that road?
Well, they, for delivery. In a local, you can, but not as a, through, you know, as a means of transportation.
So is this, is a Glaspie Street truck corridor something the planning commission wants to consider? We could put in the plan that we want to upgrade it, or we want it to be upgraded by the county. But if that's, if we think that's not, I'm actually, I just want to make, I want to see if there's a consensus to discuss this, because if the consensus is that this road connecting Glaspie and M-24 is really just for local truck traffic to the industrial area, and only north as far as Burdick, and then on rare occasions, to prevent the right turns downtown, then that's fine. If we want to allow them to Ray Road, then we should discuss that. But if we hate that idea, I want to know that now, and I won't even put on the list.
But I don't know. I mean, the township probably has, you know, direction over North Oxford Road from the Pollyant Trail north. So you can do it...
County does.
Or the road commission, or whoever, whoever does, okay?
There was, a long time ago, gravel track, gravel traffic was pretty much prohibited off of that area, just simply because of the chaos it created, especially when you, when you're bringing a tractor-trailer, a double, a dual down, you know, a slope like that into a residential area. It just was foolish. So that was, I think, addressed a long time ago. But on the cut-through, if it's, if it's a matter of, when you say cut-through, do you perceive tractor-trailer traffic using the access between 24 going east to Glaspie? Is that, is that the bypass?
Mm-hmm.
And which direction do you would anticipate them to go on Glaspie? Either way, more south, more north, to go east towards Lakeville?
Right now, there's a lot of, a lot of cut-through traffic going southbound. I know that for a fact.
Yeah. Southbound from...
From, from east.
Okay. So when they're coming, when they're coming in from Lakeville into Oxford, they're turning left on Glaspie to avoid downtown to connect at Drainer and 24?
I'm sorry, I'm going to follow you very quickly.
I know. I'm confused also, but the, the, the proposed access goes from 24 to Glaspie through the area just south of Marketplace, right? So if they need that, is a truck cut-through?
Mm-hmm.
Where are they going? Are they going to the businesses on Glaspie? Or are they going, are they turning north on Glaspie to go up to Burdick and to head east on Lakeville?
I...
Which, I mean, I guess, what do you, what do you perceive?
I see...
The cut-through traffic?
Right. I see a lot of the trucks going from the industrial park all the way straight up to Glaspie, all through the residential, and all through, all the way up to Ray Road.
Up the hill, past the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
I foresee having that cut-through, direct them, if they're going to go north, direct them back on 24, at the cut-through.
Okay.
And then send them north on Lepire, out of residential areas, out of the school areas. That's what I foresee. I know the biggest complaints in the area are the semis. My neighbors can't stand it. Nobody can stand it. You can't even have a conversation in your backyard because of it. And the speed at which traffic drives through that area, it's very, very scary. Blind turns everywhere. I think the more we get traffic out of the residential, semi-traffic, large industrial traffic, I understand you can't get rid of it all, because they have to get to where they got to go. But if we can direct them onto the main highway, away from the residential areas, I think we'd have a lot of satisfied residents.
That makes sense. I just didn't, when you said cut-through, I wasn't totally...
Right. So I'm saying, just basically, right where that Glaspie industrial park starts, right at that marketplace, have them cut-through, and that's their access point.
For northbound traffic.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Douglas, do you have any questions on anything that's presented?
Chris, you mentioned on here, on page 22, under implementation, implementation actions, that there, the Form-Based Code should be amended. If you state it that way, I'm assuming that we do have such a device, and could you point me to it, so that I can review?
Sure.
And that would be the Form-Based Code?
The existing Form-Based Code is...
Is it in the zoning book?
Is in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And it is in, it's in Article 3, but it's awkwardly deep in Article 3. It begins in section 3.4.1.3.1. It says awkwardly deep in it. And basically, what it is, is it's Form-Based Regulations in the C1 Core and C1 Transition districts, with a few distinguishing factors based on the street, especially in the C1 Transition. Washington, Burdick, and side streets are treated differently. So I think you've seen some of the design requirements in the Form-Based Code in the initial drawings from Mr. Wackel's project. But the overall recommendation of all these redevelopment plans, and the reason I keep bringing this up, is that the Form-Based Code should be expanded to accommodate more designs in more places. Because right now, we have this jump from a very Form-Based zoning idea downtown to an immediately, a traditional use-based zoning everywhere else. And sometimes on the same street, like I mentioned on Broadway. One side's in, the other side's not. So redrawing that line, and then making sure we can accommodate, because we can't right now, townhouses, small apartment buildings, horizontal mixed use, where you have commercial in front and residential in behind, the required setback that we're talking about on Washington, which we don't have at all. In fact, we require the opposite. So, and then what goes in that setback? Not parking, but landscaping and a nice sidewalk. So all of that would need to be added, so that we can get what we want out of development, and also so that we're not hassling things that we do, we also want to happen, like redeveloping historic homes that right now are considered nonconformities. So that's, sorry, that's the broad picture, I guess.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no other comments, we'll move on. Better public comments, or is it regarding this matter? Okay.
I'm Chuck Snyder, a property owner. So I think Chris has done a good job of identifying the opportunities that exist for the village to grow and to redevelop, but the part that we don't have is implementation. We have a master plan. We've had a master plan. We've revised the master plan. But how are we going to implement the master plan? That's where we don't have this thing, we don't have our arms around that piece. Are you going to rely on me or other developers to execute these visions that Chris has put in front of you? If you are, then you need to make that known, and you need to have incentives for us to do this. Otherwise, this is just a plan that's going nowhere. You know, to make a plan work, you have to be a strategic thinker. And the way that I think, I've taken years to strategically put the pieces together to the puzzle. You don't have that kind of time. So you have to take the opportunity. When a house is for sale, you need to aggressively, if it's part of your vision, go after that house and buy it. You know, we're talking about the section of property between Steve's Auto and, what's it called, Bryson's Soft Water Place, or whatever it is. You got the Soft Water Place, you got Dominic Papias' house that he's had for sale for eons, then you got what appears to be a vacant house, then you got the vacant lots, and then you got Steve's Auto Park. Somebody has to put that together. Someone has to put the little pieces of that puzzle together in order for you ever to develop anything. Otherwise, you get just a bunch of little pieces. So I'm suggesting to you that as part of this vision of a master plan, you got to go one step further, and you got to figure out, how are we going to implement this plan? Who are we going to get to do this? And how are we going to participate in doing it? You got to have that, or you're going nowhere. You absolutely are going nowhere. You talk about the East Street property and how it's potential. I own all the property on East Street. It took me years. I bought one house, then I bought another house. Now I control the Edison property. Well, it didn't happen overnight, but I control it all. And I control, I control White House Court, and I'm about to control another big piece of property. Well, that's what you need to do. You need to, through your DDA and through the village, you need to control pieces of property that ultimately you can package together for a developer and say, "Hey, this is what we got for you. This is a vision we have." You got to, you got to be proactive on this, or you're going nowhere. You need to talk to Oxford Bank. Randy Fox, before he died, I had a lot of conversations with the guy. He was a really nice guy, but he was very conservative. He didn't want to do anything on the bank property. But you understand that the bank not only owns this piece downtown, they own three and a half acres north of town, and they also own the processing center. Someone has to go to the bank and say, "Hey, what's the vision? You have an asset here that's, you're cutting your ass on your asset." I was in the bank today. It's like a ghost town. There were two tellers, and that was, that was the only humans I saw in the entire bank. I mean, the only people I saw in the whole bank. Someone needs to go to that bank and say, "Hey, if you need cash, or you need operating capital, or whatever, you have these assets. What are you going to do with them? Let us help you package this." You know, we got some developers that are pretty knowledgeable guys that could take on a project like that. But you have to be proactive, the DDA, or you, or the council, or somebody. It isn't going to happen by itself. So I'm just suggesting to you, all this conversation is great, but unless you put it into action, you're going nowhere. In some communities, it's tax abatement, it's incentives. It used to be where there would be special financing. Those days are gone, unfortunately. But you have to develop a plan to entice developers who have the capability and qualifications to execute some of the things that he's putting in front of you. Without that, you're wasting your time. Don't waste your time. Take this and use it as a building block to go forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that note, Oxford Bank has approached the DDA and myself with that very thing that Chuck's talking about, putting together a package and incentives, and we're looking to bring in the state agencies and some other agencies along with the county to help us put together a package that makes financial sense to the developers...
put together a package that makes financial sense to the developers, as Chuck is pointing out. So that's one that is happening, but he brings out a good point about the other properties, which, you know, again, assembling the land and helping, working together, and that's got to be the DDA and the village working on that, to make those things happen.
And the bank also actually had a representative on the master plan committee.
Yes, I think they had a representative on the DDA at one time also.
Yeah, so.
They still be there.
So I think, I think Snyder's points were taken about.
Well, I do too, and I think that this community's made a great financial sacrifice in creation of a DTA, a DDA, okay? I mean, it captures funds, it captures tax dollars that could otherwise go to other elements. I think the money that goes to DDA is absolutely critical, I think it's well-spent. Not always. It has been, some, there has been issues, you're right. However, I mean, this community stepped forward and identified that need. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think the planning commission might have a little bit different role in that. It's the planning commission that is going to have to absorb those dynamic ideas, those dynamic concepts, okay? And somehow make them conform and fit in the niche, okay? But I mean, I, this board has been exposed to ideas that were outside, outside the norm on a number of occasions. But it's not always about, no.
You got to pick the pieces together. This school, you've lost every opportunity in that class, everyone who's supposed to Mr. said, everyone.
Well, we've bought property in the past, we hold it right now. I'm just saying, that's a village council issue, we have no authority to buy or sell, not at this board.
But I'm understanding that you're part of the process, you're the planning commission, there's the council, there's the DDA, there's the ZBA, it's a collective effort. You all work together towards a common goal, a common objective, not independently.
Thank you. Brian.
It is different perspective for me to be standing here instead of sitting with you, but I really like what Mr. Snyder talked about, and I wish I had been able to make all of the meetings to see the whole vision, but unfortunately, it just wasn't allowable. But what I saw this evening was rather exciting. But to Mr. Snyder's point, oftentimes, you spend money on creating these posters with these pictures, and these booklets with these plans, and we don't do a damn thing to follow them, quite frankly. They just get dusty, sitting behind Chris's desk, or sitting behind the desk of the DDA director, or in the closet in Joe's office. You need a leader, you need someone who is able to step up to the plate and really invest time and energy into not just understanding the vision of the community, but understanding the investors like Mr. Snyder, who want to come to this town, and make these plans come to life, because we're not going to do it, we don't do it on our own. You're exactly right. We don't do it as a community, you don't do it on your own. You don't do it sitting here, you do it with many different people coming together, both from the government and the private sector, bringing these plans to life. And I see a lot of things that are very exciting here, and what I really, I mean, the brownstones are phenomenal way of creating this environment that I think many people are striving for. I see them in Bay, downtown on Water Street in Bay City, and I think it's kind of blends the residential and the commercial right across the street from each other quite well. With that being said, there are obviously restrictions that you're going to have in this community that, that they don't have there. But the last thing I would like to see happen, as your library director, is to have these great plans become dead, like every other plan that came before them. So it's time for change. And I see some, I see some new faces in with the folks that have been here for a long time, and I mean nothing against the folks that have been here for a long time, you bring value to it. But it's good to see new people getting involved, because that's the only way that these plans are going to really come to life. And so, if I can help in any way, it's exciting, and I'm more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Brian. All righty. Under public comments, either for an agenda or non-agenda item, is there any public comments? Ms. Buzard.
I just want to echo that, I feel the same way that Chuck and Brian feels. We all have to buy into the vision, that's the planning commission, the village council, the DDA, the ZBA, we all have to share that vision. And if we don't do that, I agree, it's just going to be dead in the water.
Thank you. All righty, consulting comments?
Sure. Well, I'll take this opportunity to piggyback on the discussion. I completely agree with everything that's been said, and I think that we do need to look into, and, and, actually, while I completely agree with it, I think that, other than in general terms, it isn't part of the master plan process. Because we don't want to hold up getting the master plan in place, haggling over what kind of development incentives we want to do. But we do need to, as soon as it's in place, start talking about those development incentives. Start talking about, do, does the village want to invest in buying property, which has its own issues? Does the DDA want to buy more property? That is its own issues. What development incentives can we start to offer? What can we do? How can we work with our property owners and our developers? But I also want to say about these master plan documents, that they are designed to support that sort of proactive outreach.
Mm-hmm.
There's a reason that they're five little documents, not one big one. There's a reason that when you look at these redevelopment sites, you can open to a page in this document, and it'll show you everything the village wants, and that that page could be pulled out, printed on double-sided paper, and handed as one piece of paper to an interested development, developer. The other, the other thing I think I want to mention here is that we are, the planning commission has a major role to play in being proactive. But the other, the planning commission's basic role is our planning and zoning documents. And the last thing we want to do is buy land, bring a developer in, consolidate, sell, and then show up and say, whoops, it's zoned for parking. So the part of, a big part of what we're doing here, and why I keep talking about revising the form-based code and getting rid of some of these antiquated zoning classifications for certain properties that aren't going to work, or getting, taking the non-conforming label off of things, is to try to make it so ours' planning and zoning documents are already set. So when we're talking about the money, and we're talking about the people involved, we don't have to worry about that side. Because when it comes in front of this body, you know you're going to get something that matches your vision, because your vision's been clearly articulated, and your zoning and planning documents reflect what the vision is. So I think that if we can get this master plan adopted, if we can get the zoning amendments that go along with it in place, we don't have to wait until everything's completely done to start being proactive in economic development ways, but it'll help. It'll help when things come up, it'll help us avoid the problems we've had in the past, where we've had disagreements about what the vision for a site should be, because it clearly articulates, this is what we want. So, anyway, that's my summary of what we're doing, economic development-wise with the master plan, and I'll shut up now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? Florine?
No, thank you.
Bonnie?
No.
Gary?
Mr. Snyder, you live here in Oxford, is that correct?
No, I live in Miami, I'm from Miami.
Okay. I think we're, we're fortunate to have you in the community, and most developers, I don't think, live anywhere near here. You brought up some very, very valid points, and I appreciate your comments very much. I don't think that what you're asking for is impossible, or outside the bounds of what we as an organization and as a group of people can accomplish here in this village.
I agree with everything that's been said, if, if we don't take action to facilitate this, and to pave the way for it, it will become a dead document, and it'll just sit there. I think that we have to find a way, and I, you know, of course, unfortunately, I don't know enough about our existing structure and organization and how things work. To me, not speaking as a commissioner, but speaking as a citizen of the community, it makes perfect sense for the village to be purchasing property as it becomes available, and hold on to it as an investment, until these packages can be put together. And, you know, we, because right now, they're just individual plots of land, and they're, they are part of a plan that we have that's longer range just than this week, or next month. And there's, it makes perfect sense to me, and I would support it as a, as a tax-paying citizen, to purchase parcels of property until they can become accumulated, and then put into a package where they can be offered to a developer to come in with some incentives, as you say, and, and produce that development that we're looking for on that location now, that is maybe three or four pieces of property that were acquired over a number of years. This is not an impossibility, it's, it seems very reasonable to be done. I'm very anxious to learn more about how, as a community, we function in that regard, just to see if, if there's money available to make things like that happen. I just don't know exactly how the council works, I don't know what the, what the coffers are in the village as to whether or not money exists to be able to do something like that, but it makes a very sensible investment from my standpoint, my point of view, and I would certainly support efforts in, in that direction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Teague? No comment. Adam? No comment. Okay. I have none. Mr. Curtis is absent, and so he would, if he was here, would give us an update on the township planning commission activities, and I think that's really about it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:40.
All right, we have a motion.
Support.
Motion and support, those in favor signify or say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.